Good evening and welcome to the June 22 regular meeting of the Town Council. If you'll kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
.......................................
Thank you. I only have a couple announcements and it's first is that the Town Office will be closed on Tuesday, July 5th in observance of Independence Day. And then, that's what it's right here. I'm just reading off my paper.
Hey, thanks for giving me an extra day off.
So it's not...
It's July 4th.
No, she has the 5th right here.
I know, but it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be the 4th.
Did Becky do, did you do that on purpose?
Becky, see it if you pay attention.
She was testing you.
I knew it was gonna be a tough evening. So, it will be 4th. I think my brain was assuming it was a Sunday and they just had the Monday off, but okay. Now that I've been corrected. The upcoming Town Council meetings, we have our summer schedule with one meeting in July and one meeting in August. Those are Thursday, July 20th, my anniversary, that's a wonderful night, there we go. At 7:00 PM, Thursday, August 17th at 7:00 PM. And in September, we're back to our regular schedule, September 14th and September 28th, both meetings at 7:00 PM, all here in the Matthew Thornton Room.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Becky got even with me because she gave me a page and a half of announcements.
She's on a roll, yes.
So, come join the Merrimack Parks and Rec Department this summer for our free weekly summer concert series at Abbey Griffin Park. Concerts are held on Wednesday nights from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Concerts will feature a variety of musical performances including oldies, swing, rhythm and blues and classic rock and roll, and much, much more to fill the air with song and sound. Bring your family and friends, blankets and chairs, and dinner to enjoy a free night of entertainment each week. Concerts run from June 21st through August 16th. For a complete schedule, please visit the Merrimack Parks and Rec, that's Parks with an S, and rec.org. The Town of Merrimack, come join the Town of Merrimack and help us kick off the Independence Day festivities with an evening of patriotic music, marches and other popular selections from the Merrimack Concert Association. Merrimack Concert Association will be selling root beer floats during the concert as a fundraiser for the Merrimack Concert Association, and we hope that you will support them. The event will be held on Monday, July 3rd from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM at the Abbey Griffin Park, which is located behind Merrimack Town Hall at 6.00 Lake Road. For more questions, please contact Merrimack Parks and Rec Department at 603-882-1046. Sorry. The 26th Annual Merrimack Sparkler 5K will be held on Tuesday, July 4th. The Sparkler 5K is held every 4th of July as a holiday tradition for many families. The course starts and ends at the track at the Merrimack High School. The race starts at 8:00 AM followed by light refreshments and awards. Proceeding the race, there's a kids' race on the track. Registrations for the event and additional information can be found at www sparcler5k.com. After you run your race, you can come and join the Royalty Club for the Merrimack Pancake Breakfast, which is held also on July 4th from 8:00 to 11:00 AM at the Merrimack High School. Tickets this year are $7.50 for adults, $5 for seniors, veterans, and children under the age of, are free. So I would assume that...
Did we not have a coffee tonight?
It's Becky.
The children under are free.
Under the age are free. That's what it says. Sorry. So, we'll get that up on our website, but I believe it's children under the age of six are free. If not at the door, if you're older than six and you're free, then...
You're free.
You're free. Tickets can be purchased at the door. Once again, Merrimack's Annual 4th of July Parade will be held on Tuesday, July 4th at 1:00 PM. The parade features a wide range of bands, militia units, clowns, local businesses, community organizations, and more. The parade begins at the Commons Shopping Plaza, Tractor Supply, which is located at 515 Daniel Webster Highway. The parade will conclude in front of the Merrimack High School. The entire route is about 1.5 miles long. There is no cost to participate, there is no cost to participate in the parade, but advanced registration is required by Friday, June 30th. For more information, please visit the Parks and Rec's website at www merrimack parks with an S, and rec.org. And lastly, grab your blanket and find a good spot at the Merrimack High School, 38 McGowan Street in time for the show that starts at 9:00 PM on Tuesday, July 4th. Yes, that's the local fireworks. Fireworks will be shot off from behind the Merrimack High School. Those coming to watch the fireworks can watch from the parking lot in front of the high school or at the athletic field next to J Muse. Fireworks will also be visible from Watson Park. For safety reasons, the bleachers behind the Merrimack High School will not be available for viewing. DJ Darren Roy will be playing music in the Merrimack High School parking lot from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Come get a good seat for the fireworks and enjoy some family-friendly music. If, in event of inclement weather on the 4th, information will be posted on the Town's website, the Parks and Recreation website, and the Police Department will send out a NICSOL alert. If you have to, if we have to postpone the fireworks, we would reschedule them for Wednesday, July 5th. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Next on the agenda, comments from the press and public. If you would like to address the council, you can feel free to come to the desk here or the microphone. Yes. If you would, state your name and address.
I'm so used to Mr. McCallie taking my thunder when I come up here and talk. There's also movies in the park at Wasserman Park. Three movies this summer. They start in July. They go July, August, and actually September. We didn't do June because it didn't get dark enough, early enough, and the kids wouldn't be able to stay. It basically half an hour and they'd have to go home and go to bed. So it'll be the end of July, August, and it's also on the same webpage that Mr. McCallie was talking about. So I just wanna say that.
Thank you much. Anybody further would like to address the council? Seeing none, move on. No recognitions, resignations, or retirements. Next, under appointments, we have the annual review of the Heritage Commission. Per Town of Merrimack Charter, Article 6, Section 6, at least annually, there should be a review with the Heritage Commission. This agenda is to highlight the Commission's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns that the council should know about or could act upon. And this evening we have John here to, he's co-chair with Chip Pollard of the Heritage Commission, and welcome.
Testing, there we go. So thanks for having me tonight, guys. For those that don't know me, my name is John Fashad. I'm one of the co-chairs for the Heritage Commission. Chip Pollard was going to be here tonight, but he told me that you guys intimidate him too much, so... He's detained with other things tonight. So just to update you on some of the projects we've been working on, something that we're advancing on. Starting about last summer, we were starting a project out at the Thomas Moore College. Tricia Fair had actually come to the Heritage Commission requesting some assistance. The college was expanding the campus and Tricia Fair and her family are part of the Blanchard, descendants of the Blanchard family, and they have a, an unmarked grave, family grave plot out there. And they didn't want the, the expansion of the campus to, to interfere into that. And they didn't, really didn't have a definitive location of the grave site out there. So she came to us for assistance. We actually had services donated by Jack, by David Palents out of Milford. He came out with some ground penetrating radar. We were out there last summer doing ground penetrating radar. And for all intents and purposes, we did locate a section on the grounds that is a grave, a grave site. Potentially, I think we had like 10 graves, I think we had identified on there. We didn't, we haven't come up with a final report on that. Tricia Fair was looking at some inconsistencies. I actually thought that the graveyard extended further than what we had identified. So she actually has looked at getting a second opinion, got another scientist to come out for a second opinion. We were gonna go out this summer to conclude with that and ran into some health issues, both within the Commission and with Tricia Fair and, and her scientists and stuff. So it looks like we're all ready to go again. We're planning another visit out there this summer. The college has been working with us, they're, they're fantastic. It doesn't look like their expansion is going to encroach into the area that we're, that we've identified yet. But hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll have a final report on that, which will bring to Paul's attention as the overseer of the graveyards. We also had another project we're working on. We're trying to identify and actually erect some signs for the 12 district schoolhouses that are around the area, as well as five fire stations. And then we included the five railroad stations that were in town. I think in that project, we're about it, we're right about the timeframe where we're looking at sign designs, something that we're gonna put up. So we do have a budget associated with the Heritage Commission. We haven't tapped into it into the past, but as we're looking at sign designs, we may be tapping into our budget, you know, coming up. Same thing also goes for the classics roads in town, Old Greater Road, Old Blood Road, and Old Kings Highway. We're actually looking at getting some access and designating that areas, which are beautiful areas. There's a, there's a nice section of Old Kings Highway right along, right along the Horse Hill Preserve that when you walk along that section, you feel like you're back in the, you know, 1600s along the, you know, the Old Kings Highway. It really is quite impressive. And then, we just started, I guess we just started, a new project. It was brought to us by the Historical Society, Chuck Maurer from the Historical Society, actually brought a tree to our attention. We have several champion trees throughout town, trees that are so big, they're designated as, as champion trees, some of the largest in the state. We have a few in town. For those that are, I know there's a few history buffs on the council here. For those that are history buffs, there was an old Passaconaway tree that was down where the Thornton Landing Ferry Site used to be. It blew down in hurricane in 1938. Chuck Maurer has located this, a rather large tree. It could potentially be a champion tree on the town-owned property up by the Reed's Ferry Site. So this is particular interest because the Reed's Ferry Site is actually land that was deeded to Passaconaway himself. So to designate this large tree as a kind of new Passaconaway tree, not only would it be a substantially, substantial tree, potential champion tree, but it's also on the land that was owned by Passaconaway. So I did a site walk up by, up there. It's at the Reed's Ferry canoe, canoe launch, Reed's Ferry Landing and the canoe launch that was down there. There's a ton of history in that town-owned land. I know when the boat launch was, the canoe launch was put in in 1999, they approached and said, "We really don't want this area, we're not looking at this area as a town park." Hopefully, I mean, this project is still in its infancy, and I hope to be back before you with a more detailed proposal. But I'd be looking for somebody, maybe either a town park or a heritage trail along that area. There is a ton of history. Not only do we have this huge potential tree. So this tree in particular, that I'd like to have designated as a new Passaconaway, is 152 inches in circumference. So just a quick formula to put into that, if it's an oak tree, I believe it's a red oak tree. When they get that big, you can't really tell by the bark, but I believe it's a red oak tree. And if you do a quick formula, three and a half years, it comes out to 532 years old. So when Passaconaway owned the land back in the 1600s, it would have been close to 200 years old at that time. You know he sat under that tree at some point. So this, so this town-owned land we have at the Reed's Ferry Landing, if you all are familiar with it, as you approach, you have the old, you know, the parking lot is where the old train depot was back in the 1800s. You go underneath the, the cement accessway, under the railroad tracks. If you turn right around, there's a lot of, there's granite, like a granite foundation to an old trestle where that, where that cement landing is. Then you continue down the, the launch to the water where the actual Reed's Ferry Landing is, which is historic in itself. Unfortunately, I couldn't find any pictures of the ferry, of Reed's Ferry itself. But there are a lot of ferries, pictures of ferries that are very similar to that. And that whole area is strewn with history. You can actually see where the carts and the ferries came up on the Litchfield side. The whole rivers, river shore along that area is scattered with bricks that came from the Eli Kittredge Brick, Brick Mill where Reed's Ferry School is now. They would load the bricks onto the canal, onto the canal barges and stuff to bring them down to Boston and Newburyport on there. And the bricks would fall off as the, as the boats would leave. So that whole area is strewn with bricks from, you know, the 17, 1800s. There's a whole stretch of riverfrontage that, that right now, it's just a bunch of litter and overgrown trees and, you know, the perfect for fishing. And you have the perfect view of the two Passaconaway Islands that are on the Merrimack River. The, the two islands where Passaconaway actually had his house and lived. So a perfect, a perfect viewpoint from the town-owned land. And then if you circle back up and around, there's a perfect foundation from one of the old Fessenden and Lowell cooperage buildings that are out there. And then as you come back through, you, you pass right by that huge tree that's Passaconaway. So it's still, the, the project is still in its infancy. I just did a site walk and I said, "There is so much history down here, we gotta do something with this." So hopefully I'll have a better proposal in the future.
Perfect. It's wonderful, actually. I've been down there, saw, before the boat walkway was put through there, it had washed out. And that brick layer was probably 10 feet deep or more. And you could see the sediment, and it was because the wagons did go down there to the barges and things would fall off and accumulate. And then the train came through in the mid 1800s and they started training, bringing them on the train instead, and the wall and... But anyhow, so no, it is a pretty amazing place. Didn't know about the tree, though.
Well, and, and the tree would be a new, you can actually see when foliage isn't quite as in bloom as it is right now, you can actually see the tree from Mill Street. I did the whole walk around, it came up on Mill Street, and it's so huge. But yeah, I, you know, well, I'm, I'm hoping to get Mary Tebow from the UNH Cooperative to come down and type the tree. And she's, she would be one of the ones that would designate it as a champion tree if it, if it falls into that, but they would measure it and type it. So, that'll all be part of it as the, as the project continues. Our projects, you know, we're, you know, our council, we've, we've had a few missed meetings and project delays and stuff from health problems, from both members and, you know, involved parties and stuff. Any other questions from the...
Do you have any comments or questions? John, thanks so very much, and tell Chip not to be so fearful.
Thank you so much.
Take care now, thanks again. Next item under appointments is Twin States Clean Energy Link Project Presentation. This item has been submitted by Caitlin Monroe. Twin States is a 1,200 megawatt clean energy transmission project, which will be buried along state roads in Vermont and New Hampshire. It realizes the existing National Grid-owned and operated transmission quarter from Monroe to Londonderry. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. I'm just gonna get started. Just for the record, my name is Caitlin Monroe. I work with Hilltop Public Solutions. We are working with National Grid on this project and are very excited and grateful for your time this afternoon. And thank you for the flexibility in getting us in fairly short notice, so thank you. I'll just start really quick. Obviously, you gave us a great overview. We are joined tonight, I'm here with Danielle Loretz. I will let her introduce her team. We have some of our experts on the project who can answer some more specific questions as they come up, and they'll kind of hop in here and there as we get through the slide deck just to talk a little bit more about the engineering component of this project, as well as the environmental. We have been, geez, to maybe 17, 18 approximately? And the seven towns of Vermont's, either Board of Sluckman, Town Council, City Council, whatever it might be, to present this project. We have done it in pretty short order because this process is pretty accelerated. We'll talk a little bit about the Transmission Facilitation Program and why we're here tonight, and a little bit about, you know, the benefits of this project, what it looks like in Merrimack, and obviously answer any questions you all have. We did have a fact sheet that I'm assuming is probably floating around. We've also got our contact information. We want to be available, we wanna be open. Our goal is to communicate early and often. So we are here in the infancy of this project as well, wanting to really kind of open the door, build our, you know, two-way dialogue here, tell you about the project, listen to your feedback and concerns. Part of what I'm gonna be doing, and under Danielle's leadership, is going to be building a stakeholder outreach program, especially as this, as this project really develops. So hearing your feedback of, you know, who are the folks we really need to, you know, communicate with, whether it's organizations, whether it's, you know, individuals, individual residents, business owners, whatever it is, it's gonna be really important for us to be able to have those conversations with you as we move through the project. And it's really important for us to kind of develop this program, town by town, community by community. Everybody's different, and so we can't do that without your input. So, without further ado, I'm gonna hand it over to Danielle, let you introduce your team, and we can kick this thing off.
All right, sounds good. So, as Caitlin said, my name is Danielle Loretz. My role on this project is I manage the stakeholder and community outreach for major transmission projects for National Grid in New England. Tonight, I'm here speaking on behalf of the Twin States Project, which I'm marking on, and lead the team in community outreach and stakeholder management for Vermont and New Hampshire where these two, this project is located in. We have brought with us Jess Farrell, who is our lead transmission line engineer, and Cory Schutzman, who is our lead environmental scientist on the project. So they can answer questions a lot better than I can when it comes to specifics regarding the environmental permitting or, or engineering-type questions within the right of way. So, a lot of times we get asked, you know, "Why are you, why did you come up with this project?" And many of us today are facing high energy bills. We also know that our respective states and, and New England as a whole is looking to reduce its dependency on fossil fuels, like natural gas. So, how do you do that? A lot of this is done with renewable energy, but again, we also know that renewable energy kind of fluctuates a bit. You know, the wind isn't always blowing, the sun isn't always shining. Regardless, you wanna come home and turn your lights on, and you want to be able to plug in your machines and, and your devices. So how do you make sure that that's, that transmission system is reliable to supply the power to all of the communities throughout New England? And you do that, right now we do that mostly with natural gas. What we're proposing is to actually do that by interconnecting into dispatchable clean energy from Canada and bringing it down through Vermont into New Hampshire, and then into the Greater New England Transmission Grid. So, this line is being developed to also be what's called bidirectional. So previously, in other projects that may have been spoken about or talked about, you heard a lot about bringing power from one area to a specific market like Massachusetts or Connecticut. This is different. This would actually feed the entire, all six states, all of the New England Transmission Grid. This would balance that. And then by being bidirectional, when we're not pulling down that renewable dispatchable energy from Canada, we can actually export up into Canada, if you think about it, almost as recharging the battery that we're using. So with that, I'm gonna go to the next slide. So, again, like I, like I had mentioned with the, the intermittence of the renewables that we have. So in New England, we have peak needs where we, where we produce a lot, and we almost produce, and there are times that we also need because we're not producing enough on the renewable side. What we also do is when we are producing too much electricity from the renewables, it's almost like you have to stand them down because there's no way to, to store that. If you don't need it, you don't run it. And this, this would, by having this line be bidirectional, we would be opening up that market so that those renewables can actually then sell it to the market up north, which would, you know, be really good for kind of development and all of that. So if we go to the next slide. So, our proposal is to bring down the, the renewable energy from Quebec, which was, is mostly hydro, but also some of the winds that they are also have. And again, it's not a solid amount that we would be purchasing. This would literally be for when we need to balance the system. So, that's why we wanted to create the line to be bidirectional again, so that there's an exchange of commodity or resources between the two.
I just wanna jump off of that. And to be clear, National Grid is not a generator of energy. This transmission line is just an opportunity for the market to rely less on natural gas and rely more on dispatchable hydro, inevitably kind of removing some of the volatility from our reliance on even efficient, less efficient, natural gas generators. The idea is by the time this comes online, we will have helped phase out the need for the less efficient natural gas generators, just to kind of give you a better market sense. Okay.
I know that this is your...
Do you mind, do you mind a little interruption?
So you talked about this being a bidirectional line. New England needs energy right now because our energy costs are so high. We're trying to get energy, and Canada has a surplus of energy presumably, or they wouldn't be shipping it down. So if we don't need the energy, or we don't need the extra energy, why would Canada need it enough to buy it back from us? I don't understand how it can truly be bidirectional.
So, you can think about, and I'm gonna quote the project director who wasn't able to make it here tonight. What, the way that he, he states is, when we have surplus here, again, because we've, we've, the wind is really high and, and the solar input is really big, what we could do is ship that, Canada could per se say, "You know what? Instead of us turning on the hydro plant, we can buy it from you." And that's actually more cost-effective.
So it's cheaper for them to buy...
So it, it would be, you could think about it almost as recharging the battery. So if you think of the hydro facility as a battery, then we're using wind and solar, but when we don't have enough, we're pulling on that battery. And then when we have too much, we're shipping it back up to recharge that battery. Because they're not pulling on, on the hydro.
Okay.
I may not be explaining it perfectly clear, but I can, I can continue to think of a different way to explain it.
You don't have to do that, but if the hydro plant is providing energy cheaper than, than fossil fuels does, and that water's running regardless, there's no way to stop that river from running that the hydro plant is using, what's the benefit of them to shut that off and then buy power from us? I don't understand.
There's also...
I just don't see that the value's there for them.
They also have peak demand times where they, they've actually had to buy energy from us in the past. In fact, I think there was a pretty major storm last year where they were, they had to buy energy from our market. So I don't think that there was enough, it's not to the degree that we have today or that we are proposing in this, but it's not, it's not uncommon for there to be a back and forth of sharing power, especially in extreme times of need.
But if they can do that already, what are you doing, what's the advantage of this program?
So the advantage is it's opening up the market for New England renewable developers to be able to sell to not just the New England market, but to also sell to the Canadian market.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And we can get you a more nitty-gritty answer from our project director on that, too. For, part of why we are here and why we're moving so quickly is because we are responding to a request for production from the US Department of Energy as part of the Transmission Facilitation Program. What they have decided to do is help support large-scale transmission projects, assist funding from the IIJA. Because it's so risky for large-scale projects like this to be able to get off the ground and get going, the benefit to this is the DOE has committed to supporting only a handful of projects across the country for anchor tenant support. So they will come in as a... So they will come in as a buyer of the electricity at up to 50%. So, we are in a very competitive bidding process right now. In fact, our application is due next Friday. We were notified on April 28th that we would have initially until June 12th, and they bumped it out to July 5th.
And we're desperately trying not to have to work on the holiday weekend. So we want the application done.
Yeah. So, we are competing with transmission projects all across the country, again, of large scale, so that the DOE will come in and help support as a buyer so we can get the project construction started without waiting to bring offtakers on. So, this kind of helps cushion and allows National Grid to do the work to build up the offtakers and get the construction done without having to do it all at the same time, which is really, really risky for people, and offtakers often are reluctant to hop on board if there is no project in construction. So, this is a really great opportunity for this project. And we haven't really gotten into the, the finer details of it, but I will say, the reason we were very excited to participate in this project or participate in this process is because this iteration of this project, previously Granite State Power Link, has, has taken feedback and has taken lots of lessons learned, not only from the previous iteration, but from other transmission projects that have been presented to New England as a whole. And we learned a lot, and we, I say we, like I did it, National Grid. They really took this information and they shifted the route, they used state roads. You know, we've had some people say, well, you know, what are the downsides? And it's like, we worked really, really hard to make sure that we would get community buy-in on this. At this point, we know a project is not going to get off the ground without the support from the, especially the host communities, the towns, the state, the region. And so we're really excited about the prospect of being able to bring something forward that's very thoughtful, and will hopefully get the support of DOE and help us get this funding and, and move this process through. So initially, I think we were one of eight projects that made it to the second phase. And we think they will probably pick two to four projects. So it's going to be very competitive. We've worked very hard to show and work with lots of different groups, organizations, communities, really trying to build partnerships to make sure that the community benefits package that Danielle's going to talk about in a little bit really reflects the needs of the communities, especially those that are hosting the project.
Did you have, just for a moment, Caitlin, did you have something, Andy?
Well, I did, I think you answered it. I was curious when you said this is a very competitive. Are, are you competing against other businesses to complete this project? Or you're competing against other projects for the DOE's?
It's other, it's other projects. So there's, there have been, in the first round, I believe there were 16 different projects that were submitted for, for what they call Round One. And that again is from transmission, transmission owners around the entire United States. So, you know, it could have been a project in Arizona, it could be a project that was proposed in Florida. And then out of those 16, there were eight that were chosen for, to, to continue on to Phase Two.
And, and this is one of the eight?
This is one of the eight. We don't know what the other ones are. It's all confidential.
Yeah, and if you make the cut, then you'll be one of the four.
Yes.
Yep. And this is the only project that has been proposed, as far as we know, since I think we all would have heard about it by now, but this is the only project that's, you know, vying for this funding that actually directly benefits New Hampshire.
Thank you, Caitlin. Paul?
If I'm jumping ahead, tell me, but I do have a question, and maybe it's my confusion. You talked about off-shooting the energy, which I understand that part. You're talking about construction, then you talked about wind and solar. I know what happened in Vermont, about trying to get windmills in, in Vermont. Do you have that infrastructure in place that you can use? Are you looking to build that infrastructure?
So, so winds, the winds generation and solar generation at those levels are actually, those are run by, by different developers and, and generators. National Grid can't own generation because we own transmission.
I understand that part of it.
So there's, there's all of, there's the RFPs that are currently out with, like, what was it called? South Coast and the offshore wind that's currently happening in Massachusetts. And then I do believe there's also offshore wind being looked at for the Gulf of Maine.
Yeah, I, I, okay, so...
So this project supports, so the, the fact that it is a regional, it is a line that benefits the region, means that we're helping support renewable energy development throughout the region. So like, large-scale solar and wind in New Hampshire is...
I don't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah.
But, so you're partnering with XYZ company that will have to provide you with the wind or solar?
No.
No. You're just, all you're looking at is your transmission line from Canada down?
So because transmission takes a while, between all of the permitting and, and the construction, but what you need in order to actually build the renewables, you need the transmission line there to transport the power from where it's made into the grid. So, we can, one of the best ways I can, the simple ways I can say it is you can put, even if we went ahead and all of the offshore wind was built and all of the solar generation was, was in there, if you don't have the transmission lines already ready to take that load, it's not gonna go anywhere.
So basically, for lack of a technical term, you're building the infrastructure so that people can offload to you?
You bet.
So, and you're using existing corridor that National Grid owns, you're just upgrading the lines that are on those current, whether, it looks like in Vermont, they're underground, and in New Hampshire, they're above ground. You're just gonna upgrade the capability on the lines coming in. So these are already pre-existing, for lack of a better word, utility poles that are in the state of New Hampshire, that you're just looking to upgrade the lines on. And in Merrimack, New Hampshire, there are a small section, which is less than a mile, which is on the northeastern part of town that you're looking just to upgrade so that you can go across the river into Litchfield and then down to Londonderry.
Bingo.
You got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
He just totally skipped, I mean, like, I mean...
I love it.
No, I just wanna, I just wanna get it out there for people because, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but it just got kind of confusing about with the wind and the solar and the bipolar and the, all this other stuff that was going on. And of course, I didn't mean to use bipolar, but, you know, with all the other stuff going on, bidirectional, sorry, bidirectional. It started, it's, it gets confusing for some people to figure out what's going on. That they're thinking you're building, like, the north, the, what was it, the Northern Pass project?
No, this is not Northern Pass.
But it's already been built.
I got that on the T-shirt.
That brought us to our next slide. You got real excited, and I'm happy to see it.
So, if you look up at that, where it says that international border crossing, so there's a, a little circle there. The underground route portion, which runs through seven communities in Vermont and then crosses over the, underneath the Connecticut River into New Hampshire, and then there's roughly four communities in New Hampshire that will have that underground. That is new construction, and that's all underground on the state roads. In Monroe, National Grid currently owns property where we had a converter station because that underground portion is direct current, high voltage direct current. We have a converter, property where we had a converter station. We retired it. We are building a new one there, where that line will get transferred, converted from HVDC or high voltage direct current to your 345 KV overhead. Right there in Monroe, that's when we hook into the existing right-of-way, which has the three structures in it, and we would be, for the most part, and Jess can make it much easier than I can. But for the most part, we're changing out the wires and, on those two end structures there to bring it from 230 KV up to 345 KV.
So before we dig into what I think is gonna be the next slide, I actually want to bring Jess in to talk about the cross-sections and kind of what it looks like today, what we're expecting for tomorrow, and why the need is there.
All right, so, on the cross-section, we have three circuits in the existing right-of-way. We've got the A201 and the B202 on the outside edges. As part of the, the Twin States Project, what we're looking to do is reconductor the existing lines. So replace the existing energized wire, and we'd be using a high-temperature, low-sag conductor, which basically allows us to get a, a much higher capacity through the lines without doing a lot of work to replace structures. So basically, we replace the existing conductor, we'll re-insulate them so that they're capable of having the proper insulation to operate a 345 KV, and we'll also be replacing the shield wire, which is what we use to intercept lightning strikes. There are select instances where we will need to do modifications to the structures to increase their height, because when you increase the voltage, you need to keep the wires further from the ground. In those instances, we have a couple options. The first is to install tower extensions. So if you think of these as kind of like erector sets, you unbolt the tower at the base, and they have these triangular pieces in five and 15-foot increments that you can pop on the bottom and lift the tower up. That's our first option. Our second option is to replace the existing structure with a galvanized steel pole, an H-frame style structure, the same width as the existing, so we keep the wires nice and straight and aligned. Wouldn't need to do any, any expansion of the existing right-of-way in order to accomplish these upgrades. And we're looking at approximately 10, 10 to 15 feet in terms of where we need to increase height. That's about the average height that we're looking at an increase to.
And that's only these two outside structures? So the center DC structure is always going to be the tallest. And my favorite part, no tree clearing in the right-of-way. The right-of-way has been cleared to its fullest width. There will only be vegetation management because National Grid has done a really good job of maintaining that right-of-way.
Caitlin, just, I have a question.
So, in this diagram, exactly what is the change? Is, is it the height of the middle tower? Because that's unclear as to what we and the citizens throughout the state would be experiencing as you do this. What is the difference? What's the delta here?
So generally speaking, you're not going to see much of a difference. What we have is we're replacing the wires and the insulators, not really modifying the towers. In some instances, approximately 30%. We will need to do those modifications. Where we're installing the tower extensions, it's going to be visually identical, just taller? Where we're replacing the structures, it'll be a galvanized steel pole H-frame, so a tubular steel cross-arm supporting all three phases, same width as the existing structure. And those are for the outside two circuits. And as Caitlin mentioned, we're not looking at being taller than the circuit in the middle.
Right, so the change that you may see would be that these two structures at the end may need to go up 10 to 15 feet, but it's not going to be all of the structures. It's only going to be approximately 30% of the structures throughout the entire above-ground section.
So what will Merrimack experience? Even though we only have a very small part of this project, based on your former slide?
So in terms of that, the specifics, we're working through the engineering piece, trying to optimize so we can keep as many of the towers as possible. I don't have exact numbers right now, but really, the objective is to keep as much of the existing infrastructure as practical and keep any modifications as short as necessary to meet the appropriate code requirements.
So, ideally, you won't see much change from what you're seeing here. Which is what we have. Yes, thank you.
Nancy?
Oh, thank you. I just have a question. Do you know if the increased voltage, there are any potential health impacts for, just in public health?
What's your EMS rating?
Sorry?
I think what you're getting at is the EMS, the, any kind of...
Okay, so, so if the question is with respect to EMF, we are increasing the voltage, so the electric fields within the corridor itself would be higher as with the magnetic fields, because we're also increasing the current. The thing to remember with EMF is that it drops very rapidly with distance. So at a 350-foot width of corridor, you're gonna see a minor increase at the edge of right-of-way, but nothing significant. And we're currently working through the studies to make sure that any changes to electric and magnetic fields, we have ways to kind of optimize those fields so that we have a low, as low as practical edge-of-right-of-way value.
You're raising the elevation on some, 30% of these, that I'm sure would offset that to a debris as well?
That helps, as does the increased clearance requirement between 230 KV and 345 KV. So we have to keep the wires off the ground further, which also helps us to reduce electric and magnetic fields.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry about that.
I'm just gonna go back, just so you can see where we're working through Merrimack. I mean, I'm sure everybody knows what, I'm sure everybody has driven under this line. I did on my way here.
I mean, the, the beauty is, it is, was it eight tenths of a mile, I think?
Yeah.
And, and it's in the upper northeast corner of town that is relatively barren. Some people are waiting for a train station to come in there, but the, the lines already exist. The health consequence is minimized because of the location, I suspect. I don't pay attention to the line. I drive there all the time and just don't even notice it, so... But anyhow.
Yeah, just, just wanted to give you that aerial shot so you can see. And then for specifics to the town, because there's going to be updates to the existing assets, we're looking at approximately $25,000 per year increase in town-specific tax revenue based on the current project design timeline and cost. And again, 100% within the existing right-of-way, and we're at the .9 approximately miles through town, just for the specifics there. And this tax revenue number is based specifically on what the town would get. It's, we have a separate calculation for the state piece.
But do you have any other questions?
Awesome. Now we have to go backwards.
Now we have to go backwards.
All right, we'll just do, we can talk about the state stuff, because I think that's helpful.
Yes, Paul, sorry.
Just one other question for you, is during the, you're talking about bringing in new lines, new wire. How are you going to, you're gonna do that by helicopter? Are you gonna, how are you, how are you, how are you planning on doing that? Because it's not like I can have a truck and pull 150 miles worth of wire. So are you looking at helicopter drop-on on the conductors with guys hanging off helicopters? Just so people are aware that when they're flying the corridor, we get these questions all the time in my office, that's what I'm saying.
No, that's, that's fair. At this point, we haven't nailed down an exact construction method. It is entirely possible that we will use aerial construction techniques. But because there's existing wire on the towers now, what we typically do is pull that wire out, pull in a rope that's rated to pull in the new conductor, so that way we have something nice and strong to pull in the brand-new wire. And then that's what we use instead of doing aerial construction, because that just, it keeps it kind of cleaner. It's entirely possible that they'll drop crew members off on the tower to clip and unclip with a helicopter, but, yeah.
Thanks, Paul.
I think this is our second-to-last slide, just to give everybody an idea.
We're almost there, almost there. I just wanted to kind of go over some of the, the host community benefits. So again, on top of, of the additional tax revenue, one of the things that National Grid and Twin States, you know, through the Twin States Project and this DOE funding is we are, we are creating community benefit plans. So, again, what that means is I have tasked myself and my, my team to really reach out to these and, and work with the communities because a community benefit plan should be what your community sees as a benefit from this project, not just the tax money, but also, you know, if there are programs that the community is looking for and has a wish list for, you know, whether that's weatherization or economic development through job training programs, STEM education programs. Again, we have a pretty comprehensive benefits package or benefits program for both... for both Vermont and New Hampshire through this project. And what somebody in Brunswick, Vermont may see as a need in their community is very different from here in Merrimack, which may be very different from Londonderry or Monroe. So really, building the relationship with the town and the community so that we can build those and tailor them to your community. So really, having that conversation is going to be key for us. The other, again, lowering the energy costs for New Hampshire and Vermont as well. But also, we have partnered with IBW to make sure that construction jobs are, you know, here and given to, you know, the state residents. So there is that precedence there. Development of opening up the local renewables again because of that transmission line and them being able to have that transmission line to off-take or sell into the use of the transmission line. And then, again, you know, regarding the collaboration with the communities, if there are, you know, special interest groups in your community, if you have, you know, a historical board that you think may be interested in hearing about the project, or, you know, especially as we're out here in the right-of-way and we're doing environmental and cultural resource delineations and studies and identifications, you know, if the historical board wants to hear about it, you know, we are more than happy for you guys to tell us, you know, like, hey, you should really present to our, you know, our board or present to, you know, one of the utility commissions here in town. We're happy to come back and continue the discussions and the dialogue. Again, that's how we learn how to build better projects and how to make this one successful.
Thank you. All right, does anybody have any further questions, thoughts?
Barbara?
So who is selling, once you get your transmission lines up, who is selling you the hydro power from Canada, and how much are they going to charge? Do you know?
No.
We don't have the, is it a PPO?
PPA?
We don't have the agreements in place yet, but I know that there's, fair to say there's negotiations.
There's negotiations going on.
So where, what's the start of the transmission line? Where? Is it Niagara?
No, the transmission line would be started in Quebec.
Okay, and Quebec has said that they're willing to enter into agreements with you, if you are selected?
I can't comment on that.
Okay.
Not allowed to.
I just want to make sure we don't have a lot of lines going through and no power.
Yeah, no, we have, we, like I said at the beginning, this is the very, very beginning of this process, where we are really just kind of putting out our proposal, letting folks know kind of what the deal is. And then all of what you're asking and all of the other pieces as far as finding off-takers and all of that is kind of happening in the background. And we're really focused on just making sure that we can hopefully answer as many of your questions as possible, take your concerns, and then anything that we can answer, obviously, we will. But again, we're really kind of at the very beginning of, this is the route, and this is our plan. We are, you know, just starting very initial outreach on permitting, right?
Yeah, we went public May 5th
Yeah.
of this year, and that was where Caitlin said in the beginning, we've done, you know, 17 Board of Select meetings to date, plus the seven in Vermont that have been done. And I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, while there's a whole other core team that's working on those off-takers and the contracts, again, you know, over in Canada, a lot of that is also just, you know, it's still in that confidential range. So like, once I get told, go forth and trust me, I'm the first one who will come here with a board and be like, this is everything that we have. Because again, you know, one thing that I pride myself on, especially working with, you know, working for National Grid for almost 15 years now, is the fact that transparency is key for our communications on, you know. We want to be out in the public. We want to, we are very proud of this project. I don't think you will ever meet a transmission project team that is so excited about a project and is like, let's go out and talk to everybody about this. So again, we are happy to come back as we develop more, as we get more of the engineering studies. Again, like Jess said, with the EMF studies that'll be going on. And as that information comes in and we're developing a more detailed engineering, environmental, cultural resources plan, we're happy to bring updates.
And also, just for reference, I know I don't think we mentioned this. We are looking at really digging our heels into permitting this fall, once we get a response from the DOE. And we're looking at construction start 2026, 2027. And I don't think that this line would be energized until maybe 2030, 2031. And so obviously, the market, everything is going to look very different then. But we have been working with a third party to conduct some studies to kind of get a sense for what that looks like. And I think that would probably help with your initial question around, you know, how is Hydro Quebec? How is Quebec, how is Canada going to benefit from this line? Why bother by have it be bidirectional? And I think also part of that is the increased capacity that this line brings is really beneficial for us. So I think the bidirectionality piece is just, it's icing on the cake. So we, like Danielle said, we have layers upon layers that we're continuing to work on for this project. And we really just wanted to get in front of you and make sure that you knew what was going on, you didn't have any surprises, and that, you know, you have our contact information. I know Becky has my contact information. And we've got cards too that we can hand out to everybody. If you have constituents who are concerned, who have questions, we want them to come to us. We want to answer their questions. We're working with somebody in Webster right now, because they have beavers, just totally running train on one of their culvers. So like, we're here to make sure that if people are worried about something, that they have, they're connected to the right person on the team, and that we answer those questions and we take care of it immediately.
Thank you.
So this was an information-only meeting only. You're not looking for any action?
Hey, I mean, if you guys-
We're never going to not ask.
If you want to come out and support the project and get a letter in for the DOE, by all means, we support it. But it's a pretty quick turnaround for you all to get a letter of support out the door, so we understand that. But at the end of the day, we would love to earn your support, but we also know that that's something that's earned. So again, the door is open. If that's something you all want to do and turn it around in seven days, by all means. But I am, I am in, I'm not disillusioned.
You could do it on July 5th, when the office is open.
That's it, that's it. My, that was a bad mistake. So, all right, I don't know, I haven't contemplated that yet. I do believe that more energy is good, because helps keep the costs under control. But, so I appreciate everything you brought forward, and a pretty exciting project.
Thank you. We are also obviously very excited.
Yes. Thank you for your presentation this evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, it is a couple people. Yeah, I think there's a couple properties, but the line is on the east side.
Yeah, the east side.
Doobie, yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah. All right. We have no public hearings this evening. Legislative updates, I have an email from Representative Wendy Thomas. I'm going to go quickly on, not, some of it doesn't actually pertain to Merrimack, but I'm going to just go through it real quick. It says, "To Merrimack Town Council Members, I've not been attending meetings due to health issues. While I'm recovering and doing well, some days seem a lot longer than others. To give you an update on my legislative activities, this term I serve in the Science, Technology, and Energy Committee. Some recent bills that we have worked on include SB 52, which created a study committee on how to fund EV charging infrastructure. Automakers are investing in EV production, and to ensure tourists with EV cars continue to come to New Hampshire, EV charging stations are badly needed along our major, excuse me, highways and elsewhere around the state. SB 167, while I supported this bill, she says, it did not pass the House. It would have set up a committee to look at strategic and crucial component of using hydrogen as an energy source in New Hampshire in the coming years. Our committee has also tried to get increased net metering in place among municipalities and nonprofits. This is an energy measure that has been requested by the New Hampshire businesses, the New Hampshire business community, and would help to lower costs. That effort did not pass the House. On June 8th, we voted on, she has NH 281, I think she meant House Bill 281, but I'm not sure. It says NH 281, which is a Christmas tree energy bill combining many energy initiatives. One very bad thing it does, however, is to repeal the least-cost integrative resource planning statute. The LCIRP requires utilities to determine the lowest reasonable cost while providing for the reliability and diversity of energy sources to maximize the use of cost-effective energy efficiency and other demand-side resources and to protect the safety and health of citizens, the physical environment of the state, and the future supplies of resources. By removing these requirements, the utility will no longer be required to find the least-cost solutions to New Hampshire's energy needs. And because utilities can charge the cost of energy projects back to the ratepayers, this would most likely result in increased electric and natural gas costs. This is not something that is needed or wanted in New Hampshire right now. Also, by repealing this statute, the utilities would not be obligated to look at measures to protect the health and safety of New Hampshire residents or to determine the impact of energy projects on our environment. Doing away with the LCIRP would essentially give the utilities free rein to start energy projects and may end up costing us higher rates, impact our health, and which could potentially harm our environment. Guardrails like the LCIRP are put in place so the projects do not go off the track and end up crashing in flames. The LCIRP is a guardrail that New Hampshire needs to keep in place to both protect our health, our environment, and to keep our energy costs down. For these reasons, I voted against this bill and will continue to work toward health and environmental protections while not imposing extra energy costs into the New Hampshire's ratepayers. I also remain dedicated to fighting for the rights of our residents to not be contaminated and made sick with PFAS. And as always, I'm committed to protecting and enhancing our public education. Respectfully, Representative Wendy Thomas, Hillsboro, 12, Town of Merrimack." Yes, did you have anything?
Yeah, I'll be really quick, thank you. Just in terms of a legislative update, I continue to sit on criminal justice and public safety at the New Hampshire House. Our session is running to term, first part of our two-year term is ending. We have our, next Thursday will be our last day. I can provide more of a legislative update later, but I just wanted to say that we were very fortunate to have that $500,000 appropriation for the Kidney Cancer Feasibility Study approved. And that's a Phase III level study, which will hopefully lead to a full epidemiological study, which is, I think, certainly what we need here. Also, I attended with Representative Rong last night. DES came to provide a in-person presentation at Merrimack High School to discuss St. Albans' request for a permanent permit, for operating permit, which we both oppose, and really concerns about the, you know, increased health risk, given what we already have, the long-term exposure. DES said they were going to put the comments together that a number of people made last evening, and public comments can be sent in up till June 28th. I know some people, there was a conflict, we had a Hillsborough County meeting last night. So many of the other representatives were at that, at that meeting. But PFAS, health exposure here certainly remains a priority, I know, for all of us. And I'll provide more of an update around legislative stuff next week. But one more, one more hearing, and we're down at the State House. Thank you.
Right, and also at that meeting last night for New Hampshire, DES was Councilman Finley Rothaus, Nancy Harrington, myself. McKenzie was there as well last night, as well as Senator Shannon Chanley was there, and Wolfram Venshun, and Donald Preventure from the MVD were there as well. And Paul, how could I forget you, Paul?
Very good list.
And it was, we were all there. And also, it is available, if you want to watch the replay, on Merrimack TV.
Let me just add that I wasn't there, because I was at the NRPC meeting last night. I'm the representative for the NRPC. They had their quarterly meeting last night.
It was a busy night last night, yeah. Busy night last night.
Right, town manager's report.
Well, thank you. I'll keep mine real short, since I had three pages of announcements before. I just want to congratulate Bed Adams, Boy Scout, receiving his Eagle Scout on July 8th, 2023. He did a great job, oh, excuse me, he did a great job. He built an outside classroom, so I just want to congratulate him on achieving his Eagle Scout. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Paul. All right, there's no, nothing on the consent agenda, and no old business under new business. We have committee appointments, and we have a number of them. We'll start with the Heritage Commission. Andy and I sat in on this, and he's the liaison to the Conservation Commission. And we had two people, I had asked her to tell me the correct pronunciation, I think it was Caris. And if I'm saying it wrong, I apologize, Chris Welsh and-
Conservation.
Then I, well, I didn't mean that, going off my list, and it says Conservation here. So yes, I meant, I'm sorry, the Conservation Commission, it's Chris Welsh and Michael Druin. Andy and I met with both of them, and Chris is a new face. She's not, I don't think, served on any committees, and is pretty excited about participating with the Conservation Commission. And I have recommended, we have recommended her to the council for this evening. And with Michael Druin, Michael does a lot of really good things. He's been an alternate on the Conservation Commission. But there's been difficulties that have ensued, and it's, you know, it's hard keeping members. And so I have voted to not recommend Michael, and we bring that forward for you tonight.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Since there's one to recommend and not to recommend, I would suggest that you take each one individually.
Yes, that's what I'm going to do, yep. So there's, I don't know if there's any further comments or discussion?
I just want to make a comment before we vote. I think it's important for everyone to understand, everyone who's applied has to come before, after the interview, has to come before the council. All decisions have to be public. So regardless of what decisions we make, all applicants have to be vetted in front of the public. So that's why everyone's being done.
It's a request to go all the way to the council. You can withdraw your request.
That's correct, but if it's not withdrawn, you have to go through the president.
Right.
That's correct, thank you.
So on this, if there's no other, what?
As a town council representative on the Conservation Commission, I think I owe the town council probably a little bit why my position is the way it is. As Finley stated, for the, Michael Druin, the one that we voted not to recommend, he has been very involved with the town sometime, for some time. He has volunteered a lot of time and effort, especially down at Scolar Park. And while those efforts are greatly appreciated, at the same time, he's brought a lot of discord between the Scolar Park Subcommittee and the Conservation Commission. And just for everybody's awareness, the Conservation Commission voted not to reappoint him to Scolar Park Subcommittee because of the discord that he has caused between those two groups in an effort to try to get those two groups more aligned. And so that's, that is the same reason why me personally, as a town council representative, has recommended to not reappoint him to the Conservation Commission, so.
So I'm going to bring forward first, we'll, I'll accept a motion on Caris Welsh, if there's one to be made.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Nancy, second, Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion on the motion? See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed or abstain, 700. Next is Michael Druin, and this is for a three-year seat, full member to the Conservation Commission. Commission. Is, uh, somebody like to make a motion on Michael Druin?
Now, how, how would we do that? Would we, uh?
Sorry, affirmative vote?
Point of interest, you, we, we should always, for the town council should always make the motions in a positive way. So it would be to a point. And, and some of the other committees, like the planning board, they actually have to make the denial, not an affirmative request, but for the town council, everything should be in the affirmative.
So the motion should be to a point, and then a vote would be taken. Everyone understand that?
Mm-hmm.
So I'd, I'd be happy to, uh, make a motion to appoint Michael Druin to the Conservation Commission.
Motion by Nancy.
Second.
Uh, seconded by Barbara, Nancy Harrington, that is, seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just to be clear, the recommendation from the interview committee is not to appoint.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye? All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Abstain. Seven zero, uh, zero, seven zero, and the negative. No, no, I did not. Okay, next, is, now is the Heritage Commission. We have John Hirstel.
You do.
We, um, on the Heritage Commission, we have two folks, they did not have to interview, there have been standing members of the committee. We interview, uh, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board, um, or even for repeat members, people who are coming back to, uh, serve another term doing that. Um, if you're a new member to these remaining committees, uh, if you're new to it, you have to be interviewed, but beyond that, um, we're able to just be reappointed, which is what we're doing, um, so, uh...
And that is based on your appointment policy that the town council has for appointments to committee? So it isn't somewhat a nearly thing, it's actually been voted on by the town council, and it is, if anybody has any questions about it, it's in the town, town manager's office and they can read the, the policy about appointments.
Now, I, I, if I said they're both full members, Anita Crager is, um, is, uh, requesting an alternate, uh, position on the Heritage Commission, um, and then John Frichette is a full member on the Heritage Commission. So, um, do you want to move this as a, as a pair?
Sure.
Yep.
Was that a motion, Nancy?
Yes, it is.
Nancy Harrington.
I'd like to be able to move that.
Nancy Murphy.
Applicants for the Heritage Commission be approved.
And then seconded by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion on these motions?
Yes.
I'll just say, yeah.
Just, uh, you know, you all got to hear John tonight give his update on the Heritage Commission. Um, he has done a whole lot of work, uh, in his short time on the commission and the commission is very happy to have him. And of course, Anita goes without saying, she has a long history on the Heritage Commission as well as the Historical Society, and, um, you know, you can't ever give her enough, uh, credit and thanks for all of the work that she's done, so, thank you.
Right, uh, so if there's no further discussion, all this question, all those in favor, uh, these two applicants, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero, and, uh...
Give me the, uh, previous one.
You want to give?
Oh, yeah.
Charisse, Charisse.
I can do that, yeah. Sorry, John. I know you're dying to get out of here, aren't you?
We'll make it faster.
Don't die.
Well, that was exciting.
All right. Next is Parks and Recreation Committee. We have David Shaw is a full member, Josh Toms is a full member, and Matthew Brown is a student representative, um, who does, is appointed for a year, the student representatives are one year at a time. So, uh...
So again, you're saying that David Shaw and Josh Toms are current members?
So Josh Toms was interviewed, um, uh, so you're, this is your first time, right? Yes.
Oh, okay, I see it, I'm sorry.
And, uh, no, you, you have it right, the paperwork, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I hadn't seen his. So he and Michael, um, Matthew Brown are, are new?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Did, did you guys meet with Matthew Brown or not?
No, we didn't.
No?
We did not.
Okay.
I don't know why, uh...
But they're recommended by the principal and the school board.
His reputation is well-known, yes.
Oh, okay.
Um, I don't know, I don't know why that didn't happen.
Was it because the high school recommended him to be the student representative to the Parks and Recs?
I think that's what it is, that is exactly what it is.
So we received a letter from the high school administrator to appoint Matthew to the, uh, Parks and Recs Committee.
Yeah, and I believe that it's a non-voting member.
Oh, okay.
So it's an appointment by the high school to, for him to join as the student representative, the non-voting member.
So...
He can attend the meetings, he can speak, he can do whatever he wants, he just doesn't have the pleasure of, of voting. Yes.
Yeah, and I have a couple here.
Just give me the ones that get done, okay.
So I'm, uh, all right, so, um, can I have a motion on the Parks and Rec, um, applicants?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Barbara, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Any discussion on these? I appreciate all of it. All right, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion, say, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero.
No, they've got a joke going on.
Okay. My expense, there we go.
Always.
Next is Planning Board, um...
Ms. Chairman, I would move that we tabled the Planning Board and Zoning Board and appointments for this evening to our next meeting. Given some of the actions on the Planning Board and Zoning Board in the last couple of times relative specifically to the, uh, premium outlets program, um, I think it would be wise for us to take a little bit more time to consider, uh, the situation before we move forward. So I make that motion to table.
To table those to the next meeting.
Then Nancy Murphy, second.
Motion by Tom Koenig, seconded by Nancy to table this until our, um, no, it wasn't July 20th, my anniversary.
Yeah, your anniversary.
Yes. I do. My wife doesn't know that yet, though. So, uh, all, all those in favor of the table motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain.
One.
Abstain. That's, uh, six, zero, one, oh, very good. All right. So...
Town Center.
Town Center Committee, um, Bill Wilks is, uh, returning as a full member, didn't require the interview, so, uh, he's been active in doing, you know, enjoying that because I'm with him. So, uh, somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Barbara, seconded by Tom Koenig, uh, to move Bill Wilks, Bill Wilks is Town Center Committee Full Member. Um, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, uh, seven zero zero.
These are the ones we have to hold.
And yes, and...
I've, I've held.
Did I give them all to you?
These are the zoning and planning, that's right here, the other ones you need to give me.
Signing, yeah.
Because they have to sign.
All right, so here I have Josh, Matthew, and John.
The last three were tabled, yeah.
Yes.
Because they have to sign these, but when they do, they're...
Nancy, did I give you one?
Yeah, I've got, uh...
Lot of paperwork back here.
It's, uh, Wilks, we have to wait, he's not in. Welch here?
I guess I'm looking, I just need John, here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Brown can vote on the Parks and Rec Committee, I was mistaken, it's the Conservation Commission, if, uh, they approve point, a student rep cannot vote because that's by RSA, but as a Parks and Rec Committee member, Mr. Brown can vote, my apologies.
Very good.
The ones here, I hope.
Um, these, these can be signed, they're not here to be sworn in.
They're not here, okay.
But they can be signed.
And sign, yes? And we're holding these.
I don't have for John, I don't, we have to give the, you don't have to give the ethics thing to people who are...
They're already there, it's just...
Yeah, okay.
Because it's a...
Wear them in.
All right. We'll get this figured out. If you'd like to join me over here, I'd appreciate it.
Hey, all you people getting sworn in. I was gonna say, you need a black pen here.
I gave her the red pen. Ah!
I've already been there.
No, I think you took this too.
Here, I don't take this. It's a pencil. I can't really write.
That's right. It's a very disjointed night.
You feeling disjointed?
I'm not the only one.
It's because of yesterday, yeah.
My brain is a little scrambled.
I put it, I put the heat down.
Yes.
I'm air conditioning.
True.
I get it on the company.
What? It's what, getting warm?
Yeah.
It is warm. But I'm not...
I put it on 69 when I did that.
It is warm. You have to bring a sweater with you. Ladies, ladies, you gotta sign this, and when you're done, put it underneath here.
Thank you.
Thank you all for volunteering and spending so much time for this town. That's all right, I put the one, we're not going underneath, out of the way. They're signing the ones we've already done.
Okay, perfect, thanks, Nancy.
So anything, and those are the libraries.
Bye, John.
That's coming up.
Yes. Right, so this, this is going back to town hall?
Anything underneath is going back to town.
Yes, they're all getting done.
We're working it, we're working it.
Everything else is there.
They're working on it.
Should I reset, or are we okay to just pause?
You can't say a word tonight.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because she was giving herself an extra day off.
She sure was. We're just be a second, I apologize for the delay. Go ahead, take it. Panic.
Bill's gonna have to pat silence, and then it goes underneath.
What's the date?
It goes there, it's date.
Yeah.
You gotta do it when you're doing it, it's both a kid. So as soon as you sign it, it goes in that, underneath. Yeah, second.
All right, perfect, all right. Next item under new business, item number two is proposal for food truck at Martell Field. Councils to consider request for the sauce food truck to vend at Martell Field located 10 Atherton Road on Mondays and Wednesday evenings during the local men's softball league games from around 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And, um, submitted by Raymond Campana and Joshua LaBranch, I don't know, said you guys?
Maybe they're not here.
I don't know, is...
Uh, I can speak, I can speak for this a little bit. Um, usually, this is one of those vending permits that I would sign off on, however, it is at a town facility. Um, we used to rent out the Ed Payne concession stand to an individual, and she used to do the concessions for Monday, Wednesday, and the tournament games on Saturday and Sunday. Um, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but she only wants to use the concession stands for weekend tournament games on Saturday and Sunday. It wasn't worth her while to open up on Monday and Wednesday nights for the men's softball league. These gentlemen saw an opportunity to come in and be able to vend on Monday and Wednesday night at the men's softball league. Um, they're asking for the permission of the town council because it is a town-owned facility to be able to vend and buy a yearly permit, uh, vendor's permit to vend at Martell Field for the men's softball league on Monday and Wednesday nights, which runs to when, Tom?
Usually... Usually, mm, late September.
Yeah, so it runs from, mm, April, May to mid-September. So they're already, or they only have July, August, and September to vend there. And they're probably gonna take the week of, they take the week of Labor Day off, and I believe they take the week of, um, of, uh, Port of July off. So it's up to the council whether or not to permit this vendor to, to vend at that facility.
It's a pleasure of the council.
Do they go through the full, uh, permitting process with inspections and licenses from the fire department or whoever?
Yeah, nothing changes, the only thing that changes is I cannot sign the permit until, because it's a town-owned facility or, uh, location to sign.
So...
Check it, check it later.
So, yes, yes, they have to go through the, the whole vending permit process, it's just, uh, it's just that, because it's a town-owned land that they want to vend on...
And they're the only ones asking for this opportunity.
They're the only ones asking for it. Um, if...
Doesn't make sense for multiples, and they're not...
No, you know, we had a gentleman down there a couple of years ago that wanted to vend, uh, Donny Sausage, he wanted to vend down there, and he came in front of the council... He wanted to vend down there, and he came in front of the council and asked for it. Years ago, we used to have a woman who sold hot dogs at Watson Park. It was the same thing. They had to come in front of the council because it was a town-owned piece of property, so.
Okay.
Questions, thoughts?
I move approval for the vending truck at Martel Field on Mondays and Wednesday nights for the local men's softball league for a three-hour period from six to nine with cleanup between nine and ten.
Second.
Yes. So, point of, point of clarification, they have to be out by ten o'clock.
Yeah, that's, that's what he said.
Cleanup between nine and ten, so.
But I'm gonna write in, ten P M.
Absolutely.
Deadline, you need to be off-site.
Yep.
And then his, in the backup, he alluded to that.
Yeah.
In the backup? Did you get backup? I only got the paragraph in the description field here. There's nothing in the backup.
Maybe it was just the description. No, I did get something, but.
Wait a minute, let me get to the page.
It does say it in the, on the.
Description of the item.
Yes, no, that's, that's all I got to.
Oh, okay. Just checking.
Yeah, no, I just knew I read it. All right, so it was motion by Tom, seconded by Barbara, multiple seconds. Any further discussion on the motion? See, now I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero. All right. Number three, under new business, the appointment of library trustees. Council to appoint the recommended library trustees to fill the vacancies pursuant to Charter Article Six, Section Two, N R S A two oh two, dash, A, colon, ten. We have three names that have been recommended. I don't know, Jennifer, did you want to speak?
Line down.
Yes, so we have, the recommendation is Molly Mortimer is a member of the Library Board of Trustees. An alternate, Karen Freed is recommended as an alternate, and Ruth Marie Swisher is an alternate member.
Yes, so we met with them all earlier this week. We had an opportunity to meet with them individually. They also attended one of our meetings, and we had a chance to chat with them, and they got to, you know, see how things went. And then the board voted, and we wanted to invite Molly to take over the elected position that is, goes till April. But then the other candidates were also wonderful, and they were interested in assisting the board as alternates. So we were really happy to have that opportunity, so.
Yeah, that works out real nicely.
Are any of them here tonight?
No, they aren't.
That's fine.
Very good.
Seriously?
So are you full now? Would you be full after?
We have one more alternate position, and we did have some other people who were interested who hadn't, weren't able to make it. So we do have some opportunities to meet with other people as well, so we're really excited about that. The more people, the more different points of view, and the more input we get, we think it'll be really wonderful.
People always great. They come in with a perspective.
Yep, yeah, we're really excited about the opportunity.
Perfect.
Very good. All right. Any further questions?
So I just, just to understand, I, because I don't have any of the names here, one of them is going forward as a full member and two alternates?
We had a vacancy, so we have a position that would be up for reelection, I believe, the next April. Is that correct, Paul? That's, so we had to fill that one, so that was what we had put out originally, and we had so many wonderful people come forward that we're happy to have some alternates also joining us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint the recommended library trustees to fill the vacancies pursuant to Charter Article Six dash two and R S A two zero two dash A ten.
Second.
Motion by McKenzie, seconded by Barbara.
Hold on a second, please. Sorry. Billie, if you could just read the full membership name again, because we didn't have the backup until today for the minute taker, so she knows.
Absolutely. So Molly Mortimer is gonna be the new Library Board of Trust, trustee. And then we have Ruth Marie Swisher and Karen Freed as alternate members.
Thank you.
Yes, Mackenzie, if you'll accept that as the friendly amendment to your motion.
Naming them.
The names.
Oh, man. I will accept Molly.
No, you just.
You know, I just say yes.
Yes.
I read it, and so if you'll accept that as an amendment to your motion, that would be wonderful.
I accept that as an amendment to the motion.
Very good. Thank you, guys. All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, next, on the agenda, the council will consider a proposal to build a point three eight mile-long mountain bike trail through the south side of the woods at Wasserman Park. The proposal's submitted by Matt, but I guess. Oh, you, are you, this is what you're, okay, very good. If you'd like to come on up and tell us what the plan is?
I thought they were just here watching us.
They're not that desperate.
I just want to know that they ride here.
Yes. No. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Fred Mackey. Hi, Fred Mackey. I'm here to propose a, like you said, a mountain bike trail over at Wasserman Park over on the unused section, which is the south section of it, kind of behind the dog park, in that area. And we talked to Matt about it. We went to the Parks Committee meeting as well. That was approved by everyone. I'm basically here to get your questions.
I, I did read some of the backup, and Matt's memo was a little disjointed, I kind of thought. Because he said he was proposing the project for Wasserman Park, which I believe is the accurate thing, but at the end of his letter said it's a wonderful improvement to the Twin Bridge Park. Yeah, I don't think he meant that, though. Yeah, I, that's what the draw everything is.
Wasserman Park. And really, I think one of the questions is, this trail, you're not, Fred, you're not cutting any trees or anything, you're just gonna wind through there?
The only trees would be the ones that are already down that might be in the way, the, all the blowdowns. There's, there's a lot of blowdowns over there, I'm sure you know.
So you'd move them?
Yeah, yeah, which, there's a lot of cleanup over there as well, so as far as that goes, it would help.
Now, it's, and our backup says you're an employee with the town.
Yes.
I apologize for not knowing. What department are you with?
Oh, Republic Works.
Okay, which is great, but I was, the, the only, the only thing that ever has been a concern in the past, we had a gentleman who worked for Republic Works. He wanted to do Adopt a Road where he could clean up, and we were told that he couldn't do it. So I don't know if there's a way that the union, I don't know how it works, I, from a labor legality standpoint. Okay, so that would work.
His job.
All right.
So he's not, he's not bringing in the equipment. Fred is an equipment operator. Three.
And that's the only reason I bring it up, because I was hoping it wasn't anything we had to worry about.
Operator three, so he wouldn't be in there with our excavator, our track excavator moving this stuff. They would be doing it on.
Right, no, this would be all volunteer work.
Perfect. No, I, I knew that, and I appreciate it. Mackenzie?
Um, just to add one thing to that, Fred was able to present at the last Parks and Rec meeting we had. This specific mountain bike trail is only gonna take about two days, two days to a week to complete.
Yeah.
I believe Fred is what you had said.
Yeah, I mean, to rake it out. I mean, we have at least a half dozen people that want to volunteer, and a few more actually call me. It'd take no time at all to just like rake it out and mark the path. The path is flagged right now. If anyone wanted to go hike and get covered with ticks and have fun.
Now, are you, how are you gonna be marking the trail?
Right, right now, it's just flagged with like irrigation flags, but as far as signage goes, we can, we have access to some members at New England Mountain Bike Association, and they have like guys that laser cut signs, it's trail signs and stuff. If you've been out to like Horse Hill and Wasserman Park and Crater Woods, they're marked with wood signs, and we have access to that.
Okay, perfect.
If not, I'll just make them at home.
Are you related to John in any?
No.
No, sorry about that. Anybody have any questions?
So, yeah, if I may, this is gonna go along Natticook Road, or is it?
So, in order, so it's gonna end up behind the dog park.
Yeah.
But to keep bike traffic away from the dog park itself and, and kind of leave the dogs on their own over there, I think the best way to begin the trail would be near the exit of Wasserman Park. Go along the tree line between the parking lot and Natticook Road, and then get around the backside of the dog park, just to separate things, so like we're not causing thirty dogs to start parking and lose their minds.
I just, I guess I'm curious, because of the way the red line is drawn on this picture, it looks like it's right up against Natticook Road.
There's an area just to get around a certain large tree that it, it gets. Looking at the map, we're still twenty feet away.
Oh, are you?
Yeah, yeah, it's up, it's in the tree line. It's not up against the road or in the, in the right of way there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And point three nine miles, is that what?
That's, yeah, I hiked, so after flagging it, I hiked it, and I was able to get a screenshot of that with GPS. And, and that one trail is more for getting you guys to see where the general areas, there's, we'd also like to, and that's all like, it descends, it goes down toward the beach. Our thoughts too is why not, you know, build a trail to come back up as well, in the same general area.
A, a down and an up, there are two different trails?
Yeah.
Versus turning around and coming right back up the same trail?
Right.
And running into somebody.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah. One would, we'd like to specify as a one-way, and then the other.
As opposed to going all the way around the park or something, I mean.
Again, like, so say summer camp's running. Third summer camp, you know.
Yeah, that would make sense. Point three eight miles doesn't sound like a long distance to me. Is that typical to, to go off and, and ride on such a short trail, or?
Well, over on the other side of the park, there's over five miles of trail. It would kind of add to that. On the north end of the park in the conservation area, there's like five point four.
How do you get there, though?
You could either, Matt, Matt mentioned using the roadway along the beach, or through the parking lots, the upper parking lots.
Okay, there's, there's mountain bike trails on the other side of the park?
Oh, yeah, yeah. They extend from the parking lot, the main parking at Wasserman, and is where the trailhead is over there. And then they go all the way over to Greens Pond Road, and within that section, there's over five miles.
So you would, you would connect through the, the street pattern here?
You, yeah, you could park in the middle and just ride from the dog, from either dog park parking lot, or, which is pretty large, or the main parking lot.
And the, just, I'm curious, the spot that shows a soccer ball-like picture on your map?
Oh, that's the.
It's just the middle of the woods, or?
That, that's checkered flag. That means the end of the, end of the, end of the trail.
Yeah, but it just stops in the middle of the woods, or?
Okay, so there's another trail down there, an existing trail, goes from right near where the beach is. And that older trail, you could take that all the way to the, the Dirt Road neighborhood off of Natticook, if you're familiar with that. It's right near the triangle.
Dirt Road is, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not very, very dirty, but it's not.
Yeah, not anymore.
So does it attach to Dirt Road, or go parallel to it?
Uh, that, that, there's a, there's a trail part of the size of, where you could get a car down. I don't, I don't think, I've never been to the end where Dirt Road connects, but there's an existing trail where this trail would come to an intersection. It's probably fifty to a hundred feet off of the trailhead by the beach.
Is that still town property there?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then.
Because at the end of Dirt Road, there are a couple of houses.
Yes.
That go in, so it must be short of those.
Very, yeah, it's really close to the beach, yeah. And actually, the property of Butter, from that end of the park, is one of the people that want to volunteer and help build this trail.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So one of those houses is that person?
Ah, this is pretty far away, but yeah, those, he's got a good chunk of land over there.
And just to add to like the volunteer piece, something that was asked at the Parks and Rec meeting was, what does the N E M B A stand for? It is the New England Mountain Bike, Mountain Bike Association.
That, we're not directly affiliated with them, but there, there's a few people from that organization that are ready to jump in if needed.
Okay, and are you, are you gonna be using power tools, or?
For the lay-down trees, yeah, the, you know, I'll need a chainsaw for some of the larger trees, and then.
And I know you're probably certified to use chainsaws and stuff, but do we have any issues with that?
Yeah.
That's what I was afraid of.
Uh, yes, volunteers cannot use power tools such as a chainsaw on our property. We've made that quite clear with the Conservation Commission. So those trees would have to be marked, and we'd have to get a group of guys out there to cut them.
So, so with, I don't know, there could be a gray area there, I'm not sure, but meeting with Parks and Rec, I'm the guy that ends up going out there.
I, I, as I'm saying that, I understand, you would be the, you would be the foreman to tell the guys what trees to cut.
I'm the one that's doing the cutting anyway. So if that's an issue doing it off-hours, then, then, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'd have to work something out, but it muddied the water so much that Fred is, like I said, the equipment operator three, and he's certified in chainsaws and.
And I got that. I was just trying to make sure we covered the base of the volunteer portion.
Volunteers cannot, aren't supposed to use chainsaws and things of that sort. It's on town property because of the viability of what happens when volunteers use chainsaws not appropriately, and they can danger themselves and other people. And we've had that circumstance two or three times where somebody didn't know what he was doing with a chainsaw and almost cut his own leg off. So, yeah, so that's why we don't let volunteers do that.
All right, I'm sure we can do what we have to do.
Yes.
I was gonna say.
So you'll figure it out, okay.
I like the idea.
I, I don't have any problem with the idea. I'm just trying to make sure we get all the pieces.
Yeah, no, no.
Out in the open.
Absolutely, yeah.
All the eyes dotted, spacecraft.
And so, if you would like, Mackenzie, that'd be wonderful.
Um, I would make a motion to accept the proposal from Fred Mackey to build a three-point, or point three eight mile-long mountain bike trail through the south sides of the woods at Wasserman Park.
Motion by McKenzie, seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion on your motion? Further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstain, seven zero zero. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have fun.
Thanks, Fred.
Thanks for all you do with Public Works.
I got a team.
I just didn't put it together.
Right. Thanks, everyone.
Hey, guys, have fun.
Have fun. Don't sweat too hard.
Item number five, under new business, the council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of six hundred dollars from the Merrimack Lions Club to the Parks and Rec Department to be used towards the summer movie nights in the park pursuant to R S A thirty one, colon, ninety five B and Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen. And this is their ninth year, I think I had read, of doing this. So, and I believe it also covers two movie nights. It's a pleasure.
Uh, I will make a motion to approve the six hundred dollar donation from the Lions Club to be a sponsor of the summer movie nights in the park.
Motion by McKenzie, seconded by Barbara. Paul?
Pursuant to R S A thirty one ninety five, dash, B and Charter Article Eight, fifteen, a friendly amendment.
I will accept that amendment. Yes.
Okay, thanks, Mackenzie. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstain, seven zero zero. Um, number six, under new business, the council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of three hundred dollars from Xfinity to the Parks and Recreation Department to be used to pay the licensing fee to publicly show the movies for the summer movie nights pursuant to R S A thirty one, colon, ninety five B and Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
By Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara, and this is their second year. Any further discussion on the motion? And on all those in favor of the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? None. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstain, 700? Approval of the May 25th, 2023 minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the, to approve the minutes from the 25th of May, 2023.
As written.
Yeah.
Or with, or with.
We can move it as written and then change.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to move, to approve, to move the minutes as written for the 25th of May of 2023.
Second.
And that will make corrections. And then I'd like to talk about that real quick at the end, but, yes, Barbara?
Uh, just some changes on page four, line nine. It's the wastewater treatment facility, not transfer. And also on line seven, where it reads Court of Financial Review Information via PowerPoint, can we add presentation? And then down on line 19, it said regular wages compared to annual budget has been exceeded due to open positions. Is that supposed to be overtime budget? Because regular wages would actually be under, and overtime would be over.
Regular wages compared to annual budget has been, it isn't exceeded. It's, it's, uh, it isn't exceeded.
It's underspent.
I'm drawing, I'm drawing a blank. Underspent.
But you see what I'm saying, yeah.
It's underspent.
He's the finance guy.
Yeah, it's underspent.
And that's all right?
All right. Are there any further modifications to the minutes? Call up questions on the motion? Who made the motion? I'm sorry. McKenzie and Hussey?
Barbara.
Yeah. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstain, 700? I, I meant to, I'd have to see it again, because it was a couple of months ago. I read something on doing the minutes. I know we loosely follow Robert's rules. I understand that. But to sit there and make a motion and then, and then to adjust them after, it's really, you're amending the motion, and it just, we handle it not in a comfortable, perfect way, I don't think. So I'll have to look at that one more time to just get my thoughts back together on it.
Excepting the motion, excepting the minutes as written, unless otherwise corrected or modified?
Because the minutes, I believe you just, it's, it's, the way I read, as I recall, it's, it's, it's an understood motion. And so the changes, you're voting on changes to the motion that are written out. It's not made by anybody in particular. You're just, that's why I have to read it again, because it's been a couple of months, and I just meant to have, be prepared yesterday to talk about it real quick.
Just call, call, call up Bill.
Billy Boyd. Bill Boyd.
Yes. We'll look, we'll look into that as well, and you're just talking about when we make the motion to approve the minutes, or?
Yeah, because the way we do it really doesn't fit in a fashion that it seems appropriate.
Yeah, we'll look into that a little bit further, and I'll, we'll get an answer out by the next meeting.
Okay. Not a big deal.
No.
Always been awkward for me.
It may just be the order in which we're doing it, like, do we amend them first and then accept the minutes with the changes? So it's just check on the order.
Yeah, that might be it.
If you, if you're looking at a, a motion, it's, it's similar to, McKenzie made the motion as written. And then there should have been another motion. Technically, if you follow Rupert's, Robert's rules to say, to amend McKenzie's motion with the following changes, and then you'd have a second, and then the council would vote.
We've done it both ways.
On that, and then they would vote on the initial. So it would be a two-tiered approach. What we've been doing is we've been combining the two into one and saying, okay, we moved the minutes. Here are our changes. The council votes as the original set of minutes and the changes as one.
Or do the changes without a vote, and then when the changes are all done, with that?
Yeah, you could do it. So there's a couple of different ways, and we can look at that.
Written in the agenda, the agenda is the motion without people making it, and you're voting on the changes anyhow.
Well, we'll get, we'll get more clarification later.
Now that I burned up five more minutes of your time. All right. Comments from the press? No one. Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Nancy?
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out to the Hot Dogs for Alzheimer's event today. We were, so many of us were there to be present, and there were a lot of donations. It'll be interesting to see if they exceeded the hot dog sales and what the, the final donation will be for Alzheimer's event, so.
It was a beautiful day for her.
Perfect day, perfect day. Lot of people, successful drive-through, and, and see y'all next year.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would, I would echo Nancy's comments. It was a great day, and it was fun to be out there helping people and, and seeing a lot of the people that we see. I, I miss so many people with the elections because I end up working at St. John Newman, and that's such a small portion. This way, I actually see quite a few more people in town than I would at the elections, which I got used to being able to do. So it, it was a great day to have the opportunity to be out there for a very good cause. And thanks, thanks to everybody that did come out and support us.
And I think we're not meeting again until after Independence Day, so everybody enjoy.
Yes.
When it comes, it'll be, it'll be a great day, and enjoy that extra day off. Becky? All right. There's nothing further?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstain, 700? Thank you, everybody.